I'd like to call this meeting to order for the City Council meeting of January 5th, 2016. Happy New Year, everyone. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Here.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Here.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Here.
Councilmembers Zuniga?
I'm here.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Here. There are no proclamations or presentations this evening, therefore, the first order of business is the public comment session. Madam Clerk, will you please read the criteria for the public comment portion of this agenda?
This time is reserved to accept comments from the public on consent agenda items, closed session items, or matters not otherwise scheduled on this agenda. Unless otherwise directed by the mayor, speakers will have three minutes to comment. Direction to staff may be given, however, state law does not allow action to be taken by the City Council on matters not on the printed agenda this evening. Once the public comment period commences, no other speakers will be allowed to submit a request-to-speak form.
Madam Clerk, do we have speakers for this evening?
Madam Mayor, we have one.
One, thank you. And Reggie Marmalayo?
Good evening, Council, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Ms. Marmalayo.
My name is Reggie Marmalayo, City of Santa Maria. I'm here tonight for two reasons. The first one is to say thank you for the -- a couple weeks ago when you guys voted, you really helped out my mother and I'm sure a lot of other people. I just want to say thank you. The second one is that I tried to make contact with each one of you, just thank you individually. That was my intention. I'm not sure if I went about the process the right way, and I was just hoping someone could explain it to me as far as how it goes, because I was contacted by a couple, but not everybody. And I was just wondering if there's a certain guideline you're supposed to follow, other than going to the clerk's office, or a timeframe, or just whatever. I understand it was the holidays and everything. I'm just curious on how that works. Could you explain it, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hayden?
Madam Mayor Patino, members of the City Council, when residents try to contact the City Council, we normally work through the city clerk's office for the council, and then through our office, city manager's office, for the mayor, as far as the contacts are concerned. So, we do have Mr. Marmalayo's number, and we will be providing that to council members accordingly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hayden. Any other comments you have, Mr. Hayden, before we move on?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Since we had New Year's Eve, and if council will recall, back in the fall, we worked with some citizen groups to develop a action plan in response to illegal fireworks. One of the methods that we came up with was a third-party citation, and one of the outreaches that we came out with was a number of PSAs. We were fortunate enough to work with the managers over at Edwards Theaters to allow us to put a PSA together, and we were able to run it prior to the showing of every movie during the holiday weekends. And so, if Mr. Khan would help me out, I have a PSA that I'd like council and the viewing public to see, deals with fireworks in our effort to try to mitigate and get the word out on the use of illegal fireworks in the City of Santa Maria.
...................................................................................................
So, we have been fortunate enough to work with the various media outlets, the printed media, Santa Maria Times, the Santa Maria Sun, radio advertisements, and now television advertisements, to get the word out on the consequences of using illegal fireworks that will come with a $1,000 citation from an administrative site. We've also been fortunate enough to work with Edwards Theater. We are in the process of making a couple more PSAs to get the word out to the public not to use fireworks, otherwise there could be some consequences associated with that. The process that we used this last year on the New Year's Eve was to ramp up in our police department, and a little bit in our fire department, and actively pursue any type of firework-related calls for service. We had a total of 28 calls for service of fireworks being used on New Year's Eve this last year. However, only two of the calls provided us any type of identified location and an address. With those, the parties that contacted us said that they were not willing to work with us with a third-party citation, so all we could do was drive by those residents and notify them of the use of illegal fireworks. Mr. Khan has an example of a notice that we placed in front of each one of the residences that came to our attention, basically putting them on notice that they have been reported to us as being in possession, or selling, or using illegal fireworks, and that if they're caught doing it, it would come with a $1,000 fine. The next slide shows one of the residences that we actually posted, and that we did go to the actual resident and post that on their front door, notifying them that. As far as the fire department is concerned, there were only three calls made to our firework hotline. We checked it every 30 minutes, and we got back to those responding parties. One of them was an anonymous call. According to Marion Hospital, there were no injuries on the use of fireworks. There were no fires in the city, nor medical responses with regards to the use of illegal fireworks. We plan on doing a more aggressive information campaign come to springtime, and working in conjunction with our police department, fire department, and co-compliance with a fireworks task force to try to mitigate the use of fireworks in the future. However, this program is only as successful as with the assistance of the residents. If residents do not want to come forward and actually help witness and identify those violators, there's not much we can do, because as we've discussed before, the only way the police department can enforce this is if someone physically witnesses somebody lighting off a firework. Normally, when the police department is called, it's after the firework has been lit, and by the time the officer shows up, they're not lighting fireworks anymore.
Thank you, Ms. Hayden. Ms. Zuniga?
Thank you, Mayor. I would -- I have to say that at least in my neighborhood, there was definitely a reduction. There was not the amount that we experienced last year on New Year's. And then, secondly, can I inquire if the video was also in Spanish, and did we use any Spanish media outlets?
I know that that was not in Spanish, because it was only played over here at the Edwards Theater.
Okay.
But we can notify the Spanish media in the future on that one.
Okay.
I do think that our co-compliance officer, Zeke Moreno, does have routine discussions with the Spanish radio stations.
Great, thank you.
Mr. O'Rourke?
Yeah, I want to commend you, because you didn't mention that you mailed out a flyer with the utility bill, and that was in Spanish and English, the flyer, basically saying the same thing about our new institution of fining people when we can get them.
Thank you. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam Clerk, could you please read item number three?
Routine items are presented for City Council approval without discussion as a single agenda item in order to expedite the meeting. The consent calendar is approved by roll-call vote with one motion. These items are discussed only on the request of council members. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, before you continue with the consent calendar this evening, I'd like to request a correction to the minutes for December 15th. On page five, the last two motions and roll-calls inadvertently excluded Councilmember Waterfield from voting "aye" on items 3G cannabis regulations and 3K Union Valley Parkway improvements. It is staff's request that you approve the minutes as amended, directing the chief deputy city clerk to make said corrections.
Thank you. Do any council members have any items they wish to pull for discussion?
Move for the approval of the consent calendar as amended?
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none? Would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor Patino?
Aye. Next order of business is a public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will conduct a public hearing in association with the formation of the Santa Maria Tourism Improvement District and the levying of a 2% assessment on lodging businesses.
Staff report is to be made by city manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Madam Mayor Patino, members of the City Council. This agenda item is a public meeting to allow public testimony regarding the establishment of the Santa Maria Tourism Improvement District and to levy an assessment of 2% as set forth by a resolution the City Council approved back on November 17th of last year. The proposed district will provide destination marketing for the City of Santa Maria. Funding will come from, as I said, a 2% levy on overnight stays at local hotels. People staying in the hotels will pay the assessment in addition to other applicable taxes. Overall, this assessment is projected to generate around $600,000 per year, to be used as advertising Santa Maria as a destination for overnight visits. Staff has included some additional information based on the questions the council asked at the November 17th City Council meeting. We've attached that in your council report as an FAQ document. This meeting is required as a step in the process to form the tourism district based on the action the council took back on November 17th. No action is proposed or required of the City Council at this time, other than to open up the public hearing and receive comments from the public. We have in the audience Mr. Glenn Morris, President and CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, as well as some local hoteliers in attendance at tonight's meeting. They are free to testify on the issue and give any other information as they would like the public to know. The process to create the district will move forward to the next City Council meeting, January 19th, if there are -- unless there are sufficient protests from any of the hoteliers. Any hoteliers that are subject to the proposed assessment can write a written protest, provided to the City Council here tonight, or sometime in the next two weeks prior to the meeting of the 19th. If written protests are received from 50% or more of the authorized representatives or owners of the hotels in question, then the proposed district would have no further cause. The proceeds would stop and would not be conducted for a period of one year. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you. And let's hear from the petitioner of this improvement district, Mr. Jean-Luc.
Madam Mayor and the City Council members, good evening. My name is Jean-Luc Garon. I'm currently the general manager for the historic Santa Maria Inn for the past year. Previously, I was the general manager for 12 years at the Radisson in Santa Maria. I'm here to speak about the Santa Maria Tourism Improvement District. During 2015, we had mini-meetings between the hotel owners and general managers at different times, wanting to create the Tourism Improvement District. It's a program we support and that we would like to implement. Santa Maria is extremely fortunate to have currently the city investing in tourism through the Visitor and Convention Bureau. However, this is no longer sufficient. With the 2% assessment from the TIBID, on top of the existing 10% of the TOT and the city contribution, we will be in a very strong position to bring more tourism in our city. Pismo Beach, Atascadero, Paso Robles, Lampoc, Bulton, Solvang, Santa Barbara, and other towns have already implemented one. Paso Robles TIBID was created in 2008, and with the money collected, they were able to promote Paso Robles and significantly increase the tourism in their town. In a Tourism Improvement District FAQ provided by the Santa Maria Valley Chamber of Commerce and Visitor Bureau, it shows study by the California Travel Association in 2012, indicated that the TID across the state were generating $5.5 PIN tax revenue for each dollars spent on tourism marketing. As well, another study done by the Dean Ruian Associate show that TOT collection for Santa Maria, Solvang, and Santa Barbara for the last four years increased. However, the growth for Santa Maria did not do as well. Both city of Solvang and Santa Barbara implemented a TID in 2010. In conclusion, I believe, and it's a perfect tool to work for the city to showcase Santa Maria and bring more people in our town. Not only will we get more guests in our hotels, but those guests will use restaurants, gas stations, go shopping, winery, play golf, spend some money, which will result also in increase in sales tax for Santa Maria. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications?
Madam Mayor, we do not have any written communications.
I would like you to open up the public hearing and hear from anyone in favor of this item, followed by those opposed.
We have one item.
Mr. JP Patel?
Madam Mayor, City Council members, my name is JP Patel. I'm a proprietor of Marriott Fairfield Inn and Suites and the County Wood Suites on Broadway. I've been a proponent of the bids in the county of San Luis Obispo, where I have other properties, for several years. First of all, I wanted to thank the chamber and Glenn for his support, and the chamber's support for endorsing the bid program, after reviewing it with the hoteliers and the information that was provided to him. Jean-Luc has really covered a lot of the bases of the benefits of creating a bid for our community here. It will enhance the ability of the city to promote itself in ways not imaginable before. With the funding that's available, and the marketing resources that we will have, will generate significant returns in sales taxes to -- back to the city. And time over and over again, over the several years I've been involved with these bids, we've seen, even through the recession, they've helped the businesses in the community out significantly. At this point, I'd just like to have your endorsement, support this, to go move forward, and I'll be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Mr. Morris, are you going to speak?
Mayor, members of the City Council, I don't think I need to spend time reviewing the particulars with you. What I'd like to do is answer any questions that you might have to clarify any of the points. I think, you know, the gentlemen from the hotels have laid it out for you. We've provided written material, and we were here about a month and a half ago with a detailed presentation. So, at this point, I'd just be open to questions that you might have that we could clarify.
Any questions from the council?
If I could, Madam Mayor, just to clarify, this is a five-year commitment?
It's an up-to-five-year commitment. So, at the end of the five years, we would have to do a complete renewal, including going back out to the hotels and doing a petition again.
But it could be actually canceled short of five years?
It can. There's a provision in the law that says that if more than 50% of the assessed properties, once a year on the anniversary, if they're dissatisfied, they have an opportunity to petition the council to make changes or to cancel the program. So, there are opportunities for review as we go forward.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I just had a couple of questions.
Ms. Zuniga?
So, just to be clear, so we haven't really developed any increased marketing strategy yet that will happen if in fact we move forward?
We're in the process of doing that right now.
Yes.
We've had some consultants in town. They have met with the hotels, they've met with many of our attractions, some of the museums, and some of those kinds of things, and they are formulating some recommendations for us. If we continue on the path we're on, the assessments will begin February 1st. Obviously, it'll take us a couple of months to gather up the first, you know, resources that we could spend, so we'll use that first two or three months to review the recommendations with the hotels. They have to approve anything we decide, you know, we recommend doing from a marketing standpoint. So, we'll run those kind of concurrently, but we've gotten the ball rolling already.
And then, my only other question is, have we reached out to those who have already instituted one of this, one of these, and do they have tools that they're using to track, directly track their marketing to their outcomes?
Yeah, and the consultants that we're, that we've engaged in this process have worked with many of these programs around the state, and one of the things specifically we've asked them to recommend are those measurement tools that we can put in place as well. So, that's one of the pieces that will come with it.
Great, thank you.
Ms. Waterfield?
Mr. Morris?
Yes, ma'am.
In regards to all of the motels and hotels in Santa Maria, is everyone going to participate in this?
Yeah, the way that the, these programs work is that once, once you all approve this, any property that is subject to the assessment and collection of the --
TOTs?
The TOT would automatically now be, you know, covered under this program as well.
So, how does one have a fair advantage if you have a lesser motel or hotel that doesn't have good amenities, and you've got another one that has great? How do you fairly advertise everybody?
Sure. Most of the marketing that we will do will really concentrate around "come to the city."
Okay.
And while you're here, here are the places you can stay. And we'll be required, anytime we list properties, to list all the properties. We can't, we can't direct people to, you know, "stay here, don't stay there." All of the marketing that we do has to include all of the property.
How is that different than what the chamber is doing now?
Sure.
With the funding that they're being given?
Right. You know, in part, it's a matter of scope. We'll simply have more resources to be able to sustain campaigns and to extend them into new markets. As we outlined in the FAQ, I think, you know, the resources that the city has provided have really been used in two major areas. One is what I would call visitor services, so the visitor's center, the work that Gina has done with groups that come in and supporting those kinds of programs. And then, the marketing that we've done has really kind of been around our large events, come to the rodeo, come to the car shows, those kinds of things. And while we've tried to market that broadly, we've really been kind of limited to what I would call the close-in region. What we hope that the new resources will allow us to do, in addition to just increasing frequency and scope, is to then push that into new markets and get into Southern California and Northern California, other states. So, you know, that's the expectation.
And are the golf courses included in this? Are you going to include them into?
So, the direct linkage is to the hotels, because they're the folks that are putting up the money in this program. But as you point out, we already have the existing, so as we blend those, our hope is to really craft a message that highlights all of the reasons people should come. That would certainly include the golf courses, the theaters, the museums.
Right.
And, you know, and then again, with these new dollars, really then taking that interest and driving it into stay the night. That becomes the big part of the message.
Yeah, the reason I ask, because you did mention the museums, and I was just thinking of a lot of other assets we have.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, the wine country and all that good stuff.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions of Mr. Morris?
Nope.
Okay, I'd like to bring, close the public hearing, bring this item back to the council for discussion. However, before any discussion, it should be mentioned there'd be another public hearing regarding this issue on January 19th. And as a council, we're not to take any action tonight, but we're here to receive comments regarding this matter. Any discussion from the council?
Nope.
That's it. Okay, moving on to our next public hearing. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a recommendation of the Planning Commission to amend provisions of the Santa Maria Municipal Code regarding commercial vehicles on residential properties.
Staff report is to be made by our Assistant City Attorney, Ms. Malinkoff.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. As you likely recall, several months ago, the city attorney's office, at the request of Mr. Boyson, made a presentation regarding the city's nuisance ordinance as it related to commercial vehicles parking on residential property. At that time, we presented a PowerPoint presentation with you depicting vehicles that were all considered in violation of the municipal code as it presently stands. The ordinance before you this evening, at number 2016-1, what I'd like to do is highlight for you in, by picture format, basically what the changes will be, and what, to demonstrate what was previously would have been a citable nuisance will now, under the revisions per the direction of council, no longer be a citable nuisance. So, the following slides that you're going to see are going to depict commercial vehicles that will continue to be prohibited from parking upon residential property. So, the first you see, of course, a very large truck tractor that will continue under the revised code to be a violation. This type of large commercial vehicle that exceeds eight feet in total outside width, or seven feet in height, or 21 feet in length?
Ms. Malinkoff, as you go through these, will you also point out what vehicles are not allowed to park on the streets also?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, as we go back, this is the only vehicle that would technically not be able to park in a residential neighborhood on the street, and that is per the state vehicle code. This vehicle could be parked on the street in a residential neighborhood. This type of commercial vehicle, you know, we're sort of having to guesstimate with respect to its weight, but assuming it definitely exceeds the height and width restrictions in the code, so it would continue to be a violation if parked on residential property. This vehicle depicted here, this type of large flatbed rail truck, definitely exceeds the length and likely height requirements, and would continue to be a citable offense as a nuisance. Again, this vehicle here, this type of van, exceeds the height limitations. This is a general public paratransit vehicle. This vehicle would continue to be in violation of the code. And this type of stake-bed truck is also, would continue to be a violation of the code. And this is a trailer. As amended, this would continue to be a violation parked in this manner.
But all of them can be parked on the street?
A trailer can be parked on the street provided it is attached to a vehicle. It has to be mobile if it is parked on the street. So, because it's a safety hazard if it's parked on the street and it's not immediately attached to a vehicle that could move it out of the way in the case of fire or public The following slides are pictures of vehicles that you saw at the last presentation, but under the revisions to the code that are proposed, they would now not be citable. So, these vehicles would be allowed to park on their, in their driveway in a residential neighborhood. So, this is a vehicle that typically would have been construed to be a commercial vehicle, because it has commercial advertising depicted on it. It also has a utility body, but we've made, per the direction of council, some changes to the utility body description that allows a utility body, provided it does not exceed the widest portion of the vehicle. This is, again, sort of an example of that utility body exception that has been carved This is also a vehicle that although it would have previously been prohibited as a commercial vehicle, because it's designed for commercial purposes, as long as this vehicle does not exceed the minimum, the maximum height, width, and length restrictions, it would now be permitted to park on residential property. And again, this truck that you're looking at here with the commercial advertising, the code had previously been interpreted that any type of commercial advertising, even if it was on a vehicle such as this little pickup, it would be deemed a vehicle designed for commercial purposes and would have been citable. This now will be permitted to park on residential property if the ordinance passes. This is a similar scenario, as is this one. The only caveat here is it may exceed the height restrictions. It's a little difficult for me to tell from the photographs, but...
Would you include that ladder in the height?
Everything would be included in the height, yes. Sort of the same scenario here. This would be permitted, provided it doesn't exceed the height restrictions, and this one's probably pretty close. Again, similar scenario, as long as it doesn't exceed the height restrictions, including the ladder height, it would now be allowed to park on residential property. Same depiction here. So, those are largely the significant impacts that the revisions to the ordinance would provide. So, those last photographs that I showed you, while previously citable as a property nuisance, they would, they are currently allowed to park on the street in front of a residence, and now owners of those vehicles, if this ordinance passes, would be permitted to park them on their residential, in their driveways.
Thank you. And the reason I asked you to clarify some of that, because I think some people think that we also control the streets in front of their house, and we don't. And... And, and so, some of these vehicles can be parked out on the street if they're not, if they're not parked in the driveway.
Correct. The state of California governs the vehicle code, and so, our hands are tied in a number of those instances.
Ms. Waterfield.
Yes, Christine, can you go back and put the pictures of the vehicles that can be parked on the streets that could not be parked in the driveway? Because those, those look pretty...
Okay, so, this is, this is a large vehicle.
This is the only one that can...
This is the only one that would not be able to park on the, in a residential neighborhood?
Go to the others.
This would be able to park in a residential neighborhood?
And the question I have is what Mr. Dan Cadenah had had concerns about. I realize that the city doesn't control the streets, but when is it the city's responsibility to control the streets? Because the pictures that Mr. Dan Cadenah had brought last time, we had vehicles like that, and the firefighter truck couldn't even get through because the streets were so narrowed, and we had so many of those types and others that you already showed in the picture. So, when, when do we say, you know, we've, we've got to make a judgment call here and make sure that the streets are, are clear? Because they do pose a problem for safety.
They can, absolutely. I had a very fruitful meeting with Mr. Cadenah after that hearing, and he presented his concerns. And the way we ultimately resolved it is that, the issue there is that his street is a private street, and it is not one that we actually, as a city, have jurisdiction over. But he was able to provide me with the CCNRs for his homeowners association, which actually had far more stringent rules and regulations than even we would be able to oppose, impose. And so, we gave him some tools. Ezekiel Moreno from Code Compliance offered to meet with his Board of Directors to really empower them to move forward. They have the authority to cite and have these vehicles towed.
Okay.
And he didn't realize that. And so, we were able to sort of work through a plan with him that I, I think addressed his concerns. I have not heard from him since then.
So, then, that, that would be a part of everyone's answer in a neighborhood that does have CCNRs?
Absolutely, it could be. With respect to your, your other stated concern is, when does the city of Santa Maria get involved with vehicles that are parked on the street for long periods of time, for example? Is, I know, a stated concern that we receive a lot in our office. Our municipal code currently provides that a vehicle may only remain stationary on the street for up to 72 hours, and then it has to be moved. One of the issues we've had in enforcement of that municipal code is that people have become rather savvy, and so, they'll move it two feet and say, "Well, I moved within 72 hours, you can't cite me." One of the technical amendments that will be before the council at our next council meeting, attempts to address that by requiring the person to move their vehicle at least 75 feet every 72 hours.
You know, and that's a very good point, because in this email that we just received from Peggy Johnson, she brings up a very good point, that street cleaners are unable to pick up the trash that accumulates against the curbs, and you see so many cars that have sat there, and the reason you can tell they sat there for days or weeks is because of all the lazy accumulation of trash that gets under the vehicles, so...
And I'm happy to address some of the points that Ms. Johnson made in her letter. I, I was just going to wait until the communication was read as part of the agenda.
Right, but that's something that we, you know, we need to discuss as City Council too, in regards to the problems that neighborhoods do have.
Absolutely, and I, I believe Ms. Johnson's comments were directed not just toward commercial vehicles, but all vehicles.
Yeah, absolutely, all vehicles.
And I have some comments for some constructive means that we can address her concerns.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Ms. Malinkoff?
I just, I just have one.
Ms. Zuniga.
So, given that the state mandates the streets, is there a state requirement that all cars parked on the street be registered?
Yes, all vehicles that are parked on the street must be registered or they can be towed.
And if they're not, do you, who do you report to? DMV, to the state?
Typically, if they're parked on the street and they're not registered, they would be towed by the Santa Maria Police Department.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications?
Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, staff has received one communication from Peggy Jensen, opposing the proposed parking of certain commercial vehicles in residential areas, citing visual clearance issues from driveways, the blocking of street numbers, and the number of cars in general on residential streets, which are eyesores and are making the street cleaning very difficult. A copy of the communication was provided to you at the dice this evening.
Thank you. I'd like to open the public hearing and hear from anyone in favor of this item, followed by those opposed.
Madam Mayor, we have no requests to speak.
We have no requests to speak. So, I'd like to close the public hearing and bring this item back to the council for discussion or a motion. Mr. Boyson.
Madam Mayor, if I may, as this kind of been my pet project for the last couple of years, it's great to see this finally come to fruition, and I think Ms. Waterfield brings up some very good points that actually are probably a separate issue that we need to address, and that being parking on the streets. This amendment, or this ordinance that we're talking about, actually will alleviate some of that problem of the street parking and taking those vehicles that have not been allowed to be on their, on the street, and, or have not been allowed to be in driveways and take them off the streets and, and park them in a, in a driveway legally again. I know that I've had several contractors that I have talked to that have talked about the burden of this, that they don't feel their, their vehicle is as safe out on the street as it is in their, in their driveway. They may have tools in the, in the vehicle or whatever. So, I, I know this will be welcome relief to a lot of them that have had to go take their, lettering off their vehicles and that sort of thing in the past. But I would like to echo Ms. Waterfield's concern that we do need to do something about cars that are needlessly parked in the street. They're obviously, you know, in some form of abandonment, they're, or they're real close to abandonment, let's, let's put it that way. So, if, if we could follow up on this and, and see if we can have some direction, like you say, and I think you said you might have some comments towards some specific points that Ms. Johnson had.
I do, thank you, Councilmember Boyson. Notably, Ms. Johnson's complaints are related to a deluge of cars, so that would include commercial and non-commercial vehicles. And I think, as you pointed out, if we are to move some of these larger vehicles off of the street and into the driveway, that would alleviate many of her concerns regarding cars blocking her view when she's trying to back out of her driveway, and would hopefully alleviate some of the congestion on the streets. As I indicated, it is currently a violation of the municipal code to park a car in any one location on, on a residential street for more than 72 hours. We are clarifying that by way of our technical amendments to require them to move it at least 75 feet, and so, that, we hope, will help to alleviate some of that congestion as well. With respect to Ms. Johnson's concern that she has people parking obstructing the sidewalk in front of her residence, that is also a violation of municipal code, and Ms. Johnson wanted to come to our office and file a Code Compliance complaint, that is something that our office would be very happy to follow up with for her.
Can I, can I ask you a question on that? Because we have that in our neighborhood too, and I, I guess, from the standpoint of the police either ticketing that, because that's in violation of ADA rules. I mean, sidewalks, no one can move along when you're forced to, to go around into the street. And rather than filing an issue with our Code Compliance, which is a three-day or four-day event, versus me calling and asking for an officer to come and write a ticket, or a tow truck to come, and, and so, how, how do you address that?
Absolutely. If the vehicle is parked in such a manner that it's blocking your driveway, such that it makes it a, a public health safety concern for the residents at that property because they cannot now get their own vehicles out, absolutely, Santa Maria Police Department, that is a citable, towable offense. If they are somehow parked in your driveway but blocking the sidewalk, because that is now parked on private property, it becomes a Code Compliance issue. And so, with a simple license plate number and a complaint with a date, our, our code officers are very effective.
Okay. Thank you.
Pictures are always helpful. Absolutely, documentary evidence is greatly appreciated.
Selfies with your neighbor's car.
And then, lastly, with respect to Ms. Johnson's concerns, she has concerns with respect to the number of people living in apartments and the, the need for the property owners to provide adequate parking in those apartment buildings. That, again, is a Code Compliance issue, and so, that is certainly something that if a complaint were filed with Code Compliance, that our office could investigate.
Okay, this, this brings me to another issue, is that there are apartments on West Boone where they do not allow people to park inside unless they are licensed, and when the car is unlicensed, or the driver is unlicensed, they're parking out on the street. So, how do you stop that?
The, the vehicle is unregistered, has, tags aren't current. If it's parked on the street, then that's, that's a ticketable offense from the Santa Maria Police Department. With respect to people not having driver's licenses and, and having, that's also, I think probably falls to poor Chief Martin back there to, to deal with. That's not something that Code Compliance would be capable of, of handling.
Thank you. Okay.
With that, Madam Mayor, if there's no other discussion, I would move for the adoption of ordinance number 2016-01.
01.
It's been moved in second to approve 2016 dash, oh, ordinance 2016 dash 01, and is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. Next, we have the final public hearing of the evening. Madam Clerk, could you please read the title?
The City Council will consider a development agreement for Western Sky Communities LLC to phase improvements on a boarding house mixed-use project on an approximate four-acre piece of property located at 1300 to 1324 North Broadway.
Staff report is to be made by our Community Development Director, Mr. Hopple.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. The owners of the Lazy Days property, Western Sky Communities, have processed a planned development to legally operate the facility as a boarding house. Planning Commission considered this item and approved it on December 2nd. As part of the application, the owners asked the city to process a development agreement that would allow them up to five years to complete the improvements that were required of that planned development that the Planning Commission approved. The owners are now asking for a one-month continuance in order to modify the development agreement and to shorten the timeframe for completion of the, from, of the improvements, which had been five years, and, so, we're working with them on that. We support the continuance to February 2nd, and the owners are here this evening if you would like to hear from them.
Okay, we have a request from the applicant to continue the item to the meeting of February, did you say February 2nd? Okay. Is there a motion to continue this item?
Move to continue to February 2nd.
It's been moved in second, it's moved in second, to continue to February 2nd. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Councilmember Boyson?
Aye.
Councilmember Zuniga?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Rourke?
Aye.
Councilmember Waterfield?
Aye.
Madam Mayor, Patino?
Aye. The next item will be the report by our City Manager, Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mayor Patino. Members of the City Council, your next agenda meeting will be on the 19th of January, and two weeks from this evening. We have a number of consent agenda items slated for you. One of them is the second reading of the commercial ordinance that Ms. Malinkoff made a presentation on. We also will be having, as far as action items, appointments, appointments to various boards and committees. We will also be discussing the All-America City Committee at that time as well, too. We will be having a public hearing on the resolution of formation for the Santa Maria Tourism Improvement District, as well as the first reading for the proposed Beteravia Plaza off of Beteravia. We'll have, be, having two regular business meeting items. One is an emergency disaster plan update, and then, the other one is the technical amendments to the Santa Maria Municipal Code. So, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Hayden. Next item is oral reports of council members. Mr. Boyson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I don't have any reportable items, or, yeah, necessary reportable items, but I, I would like to just give some information for the City Council. As you know, the warming centers have been open for nearly the last three weeks because of the cold weather and, and then, of course, the rainy weather. The warming centers are operated at the Salvation Army, and they're staffed by the, the staff of Good Samaritan Shelter. Over the last two weeks, since December 24th, we've been averaging 47 individuals in the warming center. These are individuals that would not necessarily qualify for our normal shelter. Our normal shelter is full with over 130 people every night, but 47 people every night in the warming shelter. Last year, we maybe had eight to 10 people. So, the, the need out on the street is great this year.
Thank you, Mr. Boyson. Mr. O'Rourke?
I didn't write the exact dates down, but the mayor and myself met with the airport board at our quarterly meeting to discuss opportunities between the two of us. Also, I attended the Santa Maria Valley High School gang, well, I shouldn't say high school, but the group that met about gang and violence. I think most of you may have read the article in the newspaper very good, and there's an ongoing discussion about how to reduce violence in our community. And then, I had the opportunity to spend Christmas in Oakland with outlaws, and, and then went over to Fresno for New Year's Eve with friends, and froze my, anyway.
Ms. Waterfield?
Just want to have one item to report. This past Sunday, I attended the Senior Filipino Installation Board of Directors, and that was very nice, and spent a lot of time with family.
Ms. Zuniga.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I did my final show with Ben Hayes. I enjoyed my stint with him, and I want to thank Councilmember Boyson for covering for me several times. I appreciated that, thank you. I also attended the Community Action Coalition hosted by Santa Maria High School District, and appreciated Chief Martin's comments and our small group activity. I really appreciate it as well. I was invited by the Santa Maria Benita School District to be their keynote speaker at their 15th Annual Migrant Family Conference. It was pouring rain that day, it was a Saturday, had 300 families come out for that. And the families were served breakfast and lunch, and then, there were 11 workshops that were available for them to attend, and I think Santa Maria Benita School District is a great example of how you can reach out to your community, and so, to see 300 families come out in the pouring rain was really encouraging. And then, I attended, sorry to see Reggie left, I attended a luncheon in the home of Santa Maria resident Joanne Marmalajo with Congresswoman Capps and Senator Hannah Beth Jackson. They presented Ms. Marmalajo with proclamations from the Congress and the Senate honoring her lifelong community involvement, her contributions to working families, women, labor, and political issues. And I know Mr. Boyson and his wife visited with Joanne after that, so it was, it was really nice to see her get that acknowledgement. After that, the Congresswoman and Senator and I, because they had received some concerns from a citizen regarding some activities, farming particularly in the levee, we toured the levee, so they could actually see what the concerned citizen wanted to show them. So, the plan is, I'm starting, I'm working with Mr. Posada with Recreation and Parks to try to determine what our purview of the area is, and then, after that, we'll go kind of to the state, and then, if necessary, to the feds to determine who's responsible for what's going on and figuring out a solution. That's it.
Thank you. December 16th, I attended the Santa Maria Public Airport District Quarterly Meeting.
I've got the date.
Oh, yeah, Mr. O'Rourke. Met with a former gang member to discuss plans or, or strategies for dealing with the gangs. December 17th, I spoke and attended at the One Community Action Coalition meeting. I also met with Linda Paxton, Advisory Council for the Coastal Commission Area on Agency, on Aging. December, December 26th, I left for Washington to DC and took my two grandsons with me and was gone a week, came home and got a cold. I think that was about it. Guess this is it, ladies and gentlemen. Happy New Year to everyone. The meeting is adjourned. Look at that, you were right. I was right.